Okay, Adam, do you want to start it out before Sam? Or how do you want to do?
Doesn't matter to me, there's no set procedure. So, everyone of us can go first.
Sam, would you like to go first?
Right, I think you know, it would make more sense.
Sure. I just have three items to present. The, to the extent there is a record, do we need for the record or for the file? The board should already have them, but it's a copy of the board's order of removal, a copy of the minutes from that meeting, and a copy of the Facebook post provided by Supervisor Griffin at a previous meeting. And then the only thing I was going to present besides that would be, as far as saying that's Paul Group or HR consultant conducted an investigation. Would you like to share the results of that?
Okay. Paul, do you hear everything good on here?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Did you hear what Adam said?
About the investigation?
Yes.
Correct.
So, would you go and kind of give a brief on that?
Sure. I think it was on the morning of June the 8th. I received a text from Joe Allen Shance, a member of the Loisa County Conservation Board that had shared a screenshot of a post. It was alleged that Sam had posted something on Facebook. So, at that point, then later that morning, I think around nine o'clock, I received an email from Joe. That was, I was kind of carbon copied in that. And so then that morning, I called Sam to talk to Sam about that post. The synopsis is basically, I asked him if it was, if he was the one that posted it. He said it was, that he had posted that. I asked him, who did he believe was corrupt? He'd said, you know, I don't, I'm not going to say, maybe some lines of thinking. And it sounded like his thought was that instead of thinking independently of conservation, that certain people were doing what was being ordered by the Board of Supervisors. So then trying to get down into some detail, like, well, who do you think? Who is it on the Conservation Board who is following the Board of Supervisors? And he said Quigley and Harden. I followed up with, you know, do you believe that Randy and Chris are involved in this control as well? And he said, to a point. You know, essentially, things are coming from the board instead of people using their own minds, their own thinking. The whole conversation took maybe five, six minutes. At the end, I asked if he was indeed the Conservation Board Chair, where he said he was. And then I asked if he saw any problem that it was inappropriate or unprofessional to throw out there that the Conservation Board in Loisa County is corrupt. And he said, I think I'm going to consult with a lawyer. And then that's how the conversation ended.
Okay. Anything else, Paul?
No, that's the synopsis of that conversation.
I understand.
If you don't mind, do you mind if I come?
No.
I'm here, I don't, I'm doing that more out of respect, not talking to these people behind, I didn't want them to feel uncomfortable. Well, as most of you are aware, my name's Roger Hubel, attorney here. I'm actually here kind of speaking on Sam's behalf concerning your notice of removal of him from the Loisa County Conservation Board. I'll try and make this not extremely long, but as Mr. Parsons indicated, I don't think the code talks about an actual format for these types of hearings or proceedings. So, I'd like to kind of make a presentation on Sam's behalf, point out a couple of things to the board, and maybe go from there. I think it's important at the outset to note kind of what this is. Section 633.321, subparagraph 3, talks about this being a public hearing. And I think it talks about any and all issues connected with the removal. What's really important here is for the, for the board to look at section 350.4 of the code. It does provide a mechanism for the potential removal of members of the Conservation Board, but it talks about cause. And specifically, it talks about some very limited areas of cause that can be utilized. And I think it's clear here, and I think we all agree based upon what Mr. Parsons has presented. I would maybe debate, and I'll reach that later, what Mr. Group just talked about. I don't think that's part of any of your findings. I don't think some of the things that were just referenced there were part of the notice that you sent to Sam in terms of your grounds for removal. But I think clearly we all agree that the letter outlining the grounds for removal talked about the word malfeasance. And it talked about, and I'm quoting from your letter here, for making false allegations on a social media platform. Some of the things that this gentleman just talked about were not things that Sam posted and were not part of what you allege were the grounds for, for his removal. So, I hope that that's an important distinction that you folks make when you look at this. I also think it's extremely important to note what this hearing is not. And I don't say that in a negative context, but I do know, and I think you're all aware, that you had a matter a few years ago dealing with the removal of support of health members. This is an entirely different proceeding, and particularly from the standpoint that this proceeding requires causation. It requires you to make a finding of the cause or the grounds for that removal. And it requires you to make that finding under one of those, one of those provisions. If you indulge me a little bit, I want to talk a little bit about the alleged facts that supposedly kind of give grounds to the termination. I think we're all aware that the issue surrounding the sale of beer timber by the Conservation Board apparently generated considerable discussion amongst both board members and the general public. I was not at any of those meetings. I read a number of articles as well as minutes about that. But I think it's extremely obvious that in the course of that, that it generated some, some very pointed type of opinions. Someone apparently in response to one of the board's meetings posted something in the nature of some comments or opinions about that particular. It's important to note that wasn't Sam who posted that. I think in response to that, Sam did post something having to do with his comment about the Conservation Board, not about the Board of Supervisors, but about the Conservation Board. And I think the words he used were corrupted. And if you take a look at that, I think what he intended and what that referenced was the fact that it was his opinion that the board had been somewhat influenced by certain philosophies of people on the order. That's what eventually led to the termination. I think it's clear in terms of procedurally what happened, that that's what led to it. And obviously, your letter of termination points to that comment. What, I think we had examined that a little bit in proper context. The code and Mr. Parsons certainly will correct or add to this does not define malfeasance in any fashion. So, I took the liberty of looking in what we call Black's Law Dictionary. I think Mr. Parsons will tell you, hate to use these words, but it's kind of the bible of what we use in the practice of law to define legal terms and what they may mean. And if you look at that closely in Black's Law Dictionary, the term that is used, malfeasance, talks about an unlawful act, something that is illegal on its face. So, I did a little more research about case law in Iowa that had ever interpreted the word corrupted. And I think when you, again, when you examine that case law, it talks about things that are illegal, talks about things that are unlawful, talks about things like fraud and theft, and the findings and such. So, we think that's extremely important here, that whatever Sam said, and however that may have been interpreted by different people, certainly doesn't, certainly doesn't rise to that level. And it's also important to note that malfeasance is a different creature in the law than misfeasance or nonfeasance. If you're not performing your duty, that's nonfeasance or misfeasance, but it's not malfeasance. My point here is not to be too technical about that, but to put it in context. Because when the code requires that kind of finding, I think it's incumbent upon the board to examine it in that legal context. Let me kind of move forward just a little bit on a more practical level and kind of take it out of the legalese if I can here for just a moment. I think what you'll find is that Sam offered nothing more than a comment and opinion about how he saw things proceeding on the Conservation Board. And whether that's done during a board meeting, whether that's done during his social media, whether that's done by Sam talking out in the street, he certainly has that right. It's not by his hand to get big into the whole freedom of speech issue. I think that can be beat to death. But as a practical matter, I think that's what it is. It's a thankless job, what you gentlemen do, it's a thankless job of people who serve on public boards and commission. It's not unusual for them to be criticized, sometimes attacked, ideally, and hopefully not physically. But certainly to be criticized, and people will offer their opinions. It's the nature of the beast. And so, I think to the extent anyone saw this comment, there's nothing illegal about what Sam said, there's nothing about unlawful about what Sam said. Quite frankly, there's nothing that anybody has pointed to that even refers to the performance of his duties as a member of the Loisa County Conservation Board. So, I think what this is really about is that Sam's comments just don't rise to the level that somebody could find or allege that he's done anything illegal, unlawful, or fits the definition of malfeasance under the code. And so, we would respectfully ask at the conclusion of this hearing on Sam's behalf, that the board rescind their finding of removing him from the board and reinstated accordingly. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Again, I know this was a public hearing, so I know you may have other individuals or other presentations, but once all certainly wait for that and maybe an opportunity to kind of wrap up on Sam's behalf. Thank you, gentlemen.
Sam, you have anything? I would just say that the board went through a very similar legal analysis and determined the, well, determined the finding that they put in their order.
Paul, do you have anything to add? You're still muted.
After hearing everything, I mean, to note that the Conservation Board members that reached out to me initially were very concerned about allegations of defamation, if it was slanderous, if they had any source of sort of ability to act upon that. So, I know that with interpretation is always difficult. But I can tell you that it's my opinion, those people on the Conservation Board certainly did take it as an allegation that they were corrupt and that they were going forward to find out who is it that was being accused of being corrupt. And so, I think, you know, as far as trying to understand how that comment was, was taken, that certainly where the Conservation Board, at least the members I spoke to, felt that it had crossed the line, that there was some sort of an allegation that there was some corruption at the Conservation Board. And I know with that Black's legal language, you know, there's other places that'll say that malfeasance is intentional conduct that is wrongful or unlawful. But I know there can be more conversation as to whether or not there has to be a criminal element to that. And then, again, I'm not an attorney, I'm an HR guy, but looking, you know, corruption, I think, is a criminal statute in the state of Iowa. And again, from, from my perspective, it was my understanding from talking to the Conservation Board members, that they believed that the Conservation Board Chair was accusing them of being corrupt. And so, that's again, how this whole thing started and where it leads us today.
Okay. What I'm going to do is open this up to public comments. We're going to limit it to three minutes each. And the public comments must be very professional, get out of hand, and allow that. Whoever wants to start, Sam, you want to start first with it? Okay. Okay, anybody else would like to have a comment?
I have a question.
Hang on a second, you've got one I have on the floor. Hang on a second. Go ahead.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Are you going to read the comments that were submitted online as well, or submitted to you? Are they going to be read aloud? I'd like to hear Brad's comments read aloud. Don't you think those? No? Brad Moss, just sucky this hand down. Can this be read as well, or shall I?
This was brought into the office yesterday.
Yes, but can it be read? I, can I, more than three minutes, read his comments and mine? Okay. Can I stand up too? Might as well. I'll read Brad Moss's statement first. Hello, my name is Brad Moss. I'm submitting this statement in regards to decisions made by the Loisa County Board of Supervisors, June 21st, 2022, to remove Sam Wilson from the Loisa County Conservation Board. In, for some background, I moved to Loisa County in 91, directly out of college after completing my bachelor's degree in biology from UNI. As a lifelong outdoorsman, I was drawn to the area by the vast public outdoor natural resource opportunities the county had to offer. I knew this was a place I wanted to live and raise my family. In the last 30 years, I've had the opportunity to work with many of the conservation groups, Iowa DNR, U.S. Mission Wildlife Service, LCCB, that make our county so uniquely great. I was also blessed with the opportunity to serve on the Loisa County Conservation Board for two terms, 2007 to 2017. These experiences have driven the ongoing critical respect for the need to have qualified membership on the Loisa County Conservation Board. As a Loisa County taxpayer, I believe we should have five qualified board members that have the Loisa County taxpayers' best interest in conservation represented every day. This should not be an independent voice that is not clouded and bi-personal. I apologize, this should be an independent voice that is not clouded by personal or other conflicts of interest. It appears the Conservation Board application and appointment process has been inconsistent since the end of my second Conservation Board term in 2017. Iowa State Code provides that appointment should be made on the basis of demonstrated interest in conservation matters incomplete. Or non-consistent applications do not meet these criteria, whether intentional or unintentional. At times, the process has changed and errors have been made. As far as Sam's Facebook post, it seems to be somewhat taken out of context. The Board of Supervisors letter dated July 13, 2022, references written statements posted alleging corruption on the Conservation Board. The actual word that was used was corrupted. Corrupted can be defined as to change or debase by making errors or unintentional alterations. I am of the belief that the average Loisa County citizen would agree that this definition fits the current status of the Conservation Board appointment process. Natural resources and abundant outdoor opportunities are and always have been the Loisa County's most precious and valuable asset. Removing Sam Wilson, who has represented the county's best interest in conservation, is not going to help any of our current challenges. Sam should be immediately reinstated, the Loisa County Conservation Board, in good standing. Brad Moss, 10-344, County Route X61, Waplo. Thank you for letting me read that. My name is Kathy Jolly Vance, rural morning sun. Thank you for allowing public input on the process of removing Sam Wilson from the Conservation Board. I have three things specifically I'd like to share. Number one, or to have controversy and conflict and a healthy dose of that. If there's no difference in opinion, you certainly don't need a board. You need an exec, some staff, and a little rubber stamp. Two, all boards should be filled with people that understand and accept the mission of the organization on which they're serving. As a Loisa County taxpayer, I hope you consider that every single time you appoint someone to any such board. Iowa Code for Conservation Boards, and I think this has been said several times, your job, this is your job, is to appoint members of the county Conservation Board on the basis of their demonstrated interest in conservation matters. I've served on the board. I can understand demonstrated interest might reflect many different and even opposing facets of conservation, including, but not limited to, hunting, fishing, birding, paddling, flora, fauna, public education, resource interpretation, camping and hiking, and pure conservation, or keeping land, water, and air in its natural state for the sake of the natural. And in this, I can see Loisa County also has needs for members with strong relationship with commercial agriculture as well as faith and, say that again. I ask that Brad's three minutes not be included in mine, is that not allowable?
I give you three minutes.
All total?
Yeah.
All right. So, your job is to assure that we have board members that have demonstrated interest. I hope you're using your applications. I want, I would be interested in seeing the matrix and scoring you use on those applications. I'd like to submit my letter and writing for the record as well, my full letter. Yep, thank you.
Other comments?
Good morning. I'm Sherri Humphries, a taxpayer of Loisa County, and a former county conservation board chairperson. How did we get here? Dismissal, dismissal of a volunteer board member for something he wrote on Facebook and categorizing his statement as malfeasance. While Sam's comment wasn't complimentary to you or to the Conservation Board, I find it hard to believe it rises to the level of malfeasance. I would like to think in your capacity as supervisors, you would be able to express your disappointment and move on rather than to dismiss Sam as a board member. You have dismissed him for making false allegations. What if Sam has a point? What if he is right and the board is correct? Iowa Code, section 350.2, paragraph 3 states, "Members of the county conservation board shall be selected and appointed on the basis of your demonstrated interest in conservation matters." When appointing new members to a board, are you really looking for demonstrated interest in conservation matters? Or are you merely looking for board members you consider fine people, willing to serve, and maybe represent your position without regard to the requirements of the code? Sam has a demonstrated interest in conservation matters, a demonstrably stronger interest than the remaining county Conservation Board members. He goes above and beyond what is expected as a Conservation Board member and is a valued volunteer serving the county. He did not allege corruption, and his actual statement does not constitute malfeasance. As a Loisa County taxpayer, I cannot support the Board of Supervisors spending our tax dollars to pursue this petty vendetta. Please, use our resources to build a better Loisa County. Volunteers with demonstrated interest are invaluable. Attacking and dismissing a volunteer in this very public manner sends a terrible message to potential future volunteers with a passion for conservation. Please reconsider this dismissal and reinstate Sam to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, I'm Amy Wilson from the HR person, all right. I refer to people on the board being upset that they might have been alleged as corrupt. And can we know who those people are? I'm one of them. Okay, are you drawn? Okay. So, on the board, we have, I believe, a lot of a county employee, a supervisor, and another person who works for a supervisor. And so, I don't know if all those people have filled out their correct applications, as Kathy alluded to. And I just feel like there is a lot of inside people on the board and not a broad spectrum of people representing the county that care for conservation that are on the board. The board seems to be half, maybe, made of people that are employees for the county or have interested our friendships or even some nepotism with people on the board. I just want to say that Sam had applied for the board a few times, once because of the Iowa law of female males couldn't be on the board. The day he got on the board, he has spent almost every entire weekend in one of our county parks, areas, hiking, not camping, kayaking. He will go to any activity that he can, he works during the day, so if there's not a day activity, he can attend those. He will be there helping, anticipating. He is so involved, he knows every area that we have, he's walked it, kayaked it, if it's water. He cares about conservation and has, once he was on, that was it, that he is so dedicated. He knows every area. He goes and helps the kids fish, or if there's an event, he is there to volunteer. When he filled out the application at both times, he meant it, he is truly for the conservation. And I'm not sure if all these county employees, I'm not saying that they are not, and I'm not saying that they're not. I'm just saying how they filled out applications, have they, why do we have so many county employees on a board that's supposed to represent the general public?
Can I respond to that? I did fill out an application. I am the only county employee. The code does allow for a board supervisor to serve on any board that is receiving tax dollars. Am I stating that correctly? And in my 28 years with Loisa County, all the other boards that I've had any affiliation with have had a supervisor on that board. And I have found that to be beneficial to the board, whether it's solid waste, or public health, and now conservation. I've been on the Conservation Board a very short time, but all I've felt is pushback. And especially from Sam, who voiced it the strongest, that a supervisor should not be on that board. And he was angry about it and mentioned it repeatedly. But yes, I did fill out an application. A supervisor should not have to fill out an application. And if you're referring to Josh Harden, he does not work for Loisa County. So, I am the only county employee serving on that board currently.
Yeah. Who else?
Wasn't there someone in the other room?
Oh, Dave, I forgot, I can't see him. Dave, go ahead.
Okay. Waplo, Iowa. Malfeasance is intentional wrongdoing? Yes? That, oh. Is that correct? Intentional wrongdoing?
That would be a short definition, but there.
Is driving 57 miles an hour in a 55 mile an hour speed limit posted road, same thing? I don't know if I can get an answer for that. Roger, is that, well, I'm sorry, I won't ask you. I've driven 57 miles an hour in a 55 mile an hour speed limit zone, and I've done that intentionally. I guess I'm guilty of the same thing, if that definition applies. That's all.
Dave, did you have a question? Okay. No, okay.
That was the only answer.
I didn't know who all are that.
Okay, okay.
Just want to make sure I ain't missing anybody.
Sean Hox, I can speak here. Um, I do agree with Kathy that. As a public record, maybe the board members, at least the reason why they want to be on. The application, the reason why they wanted to serve, should be a matter of public record. Yeah, that's all I have.
On the applications?
Yeah, on the application. That should be a reason why, and I've asked this before, for the conservation.
Thank you.
So.
Katie also has.
But you've also denied it.
Denied what?
Because I've asked the county board, maybe whether it, I could go.
And see them? I've asked for them at the courthouse, and they told me they do not keep them at the courthouse. It is public record, but they give them to Katie. But it says right on the bottom of this is public record, right on your application. So we don't have to.
Okay, so if he go to Katie, it's a public record at this question.
I have requested those from Katie, and because of previous conversations, she wanted to consult with Adam as to whether those are. Available to us as public record. I don't know if you've responded to her yet, if you had a chance.
Well, Kate contacted me about several legal issues while I was in a burger trials last week. I got back to her this morning. She did not mention that issue, but while we've been sitting here, she texted me that she forgot about that issue. And I texted her back the answer, which was if they can withhold confidential information of the applicant, they could be determined to be public record, and that was fine.
Thank you. But now everybody's filling them out, because supervisors don't have to.
By law, we are commutants by our election office.
Can I continue? I kind of disagree with that because if you get thrown off the supervisors. How can you still continue to be on the conservation board? Shouldn't you still have the.
The seat is all in while we're on. Anything else? From anybody?
Once you, once you, once your term of supervisor ends. Your membership on that board will end unless you're elected back or appointed back. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Al Bowling, Columbus Junction. I spent a good part of the week writing out checks to pay my taxes. And as I went to the mailbox this morning, I noticed I got some work to pay. And I know that a part of that at least goes to you guys' salaries. And thank you for doing the job you do. As a taxpayer, I feel like you owe me five good county conservation board members. I've never been fond of the idea of having a supervisor on the conservation board. I mean, I understand in a lot of situations with roads and stuff like that where it kind of makes sense. In this case, I think the law pretty much says it's got to be a demonstrated interest in conservation. And I, I find it really hard to believe that a supervisor can take off one hat, put on another one. As they go into a different meeting. But anyway, that's decided point. I want five. I want you to provide me with five good Laus County Conservation Board members. That's it.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
As far as, as the supervisor being on the board. Why would you not want one on?
I just think that, you know, maybe as a sitting on is not a voting member or something. Just to be a conduit and bring information back to the supervisors. Kind of like you would do with the Southeastern Power League of planning commissioners.
You're entitled to that opinion. That would be, that's, that's an issue that we aren't going to solve. You know, that's an issue you pick up with your legislative.
Yeah, no, I.
As to who is appointed to what board and why.
Yeah.
That can be addressed, but it's going to have to be at a higher level than here.
May I make a comment to that as well? It appears to me that you have already a great deal of power over the conservation board. You appoint them. You set the budget for the conservation board as a whole. And clearly, you have some say over the staff, certainly the director, perhaps not the rest of the staff. So you, now you have two hands. You oversee it and you're a board member. That, why not, you can do a lot as a supervisor. Get five people that can also add in and get one more person that's interested in conservation. You don't need to, you know.
That argument carry with public health.
Absolutely, and every other board. Absolutely.
That's nothing that we can take care of here. Take care of that.
Well, you're not required to appoint a supervisor. You're a lauer, but not required.
Okay.
It might be a form of a question, but in, in your process, you said you may, you can be set on a board. As a supervisor, does it say shall?
No.
Or does it say you may?
May. May.
So there's nothing says that you have to. You guys choose, hey, I don't want to go to any more meetings. You don't do it. So it doesn't, you know, it's not set in stone that you have to have one of you three sitting on that board the way I, what I'm hearing.
And we've had, we've had, every one of us has been on there.
But not for very long. I was served on the board, no supervisor at that time.
No, but every one of us has been on there, and then we've agreed, the three of us, that we believe the supervisor should be there. And we're given that option to do it, so we do it.
Okay, but this all's understood. It's my option.
Yeah, no, if there's two supervisors that say, no, we don't need somebody on there, well, then there wouldn't be anyone else. We've got three that seem to agree that we have, because we've all taken our turn on to.
Can I ask you what you perceive as the need to be on there? What's the need that you are serving?
Because it's just, just going to snow on us. Next thing, the next thing, so we're off subject here a little bit here. We're talking about. We can't wait for Sam's removal, not to discuss the qualification for whether a supervisor should be on the board. This is getting off base. Don't you agree, the two attorneys in the room, don't you agree, it's getting a little off subject here?
I don't think so.
Well, it's a, it's a public hearing, and the chair is responsible for directing.
Okay, I'm going to be quiet. I'm not going to say anything. I'm done.
I think if you all fill that applications, Sam's would rise to the top. And I would hope you wouldn't remove someone whose application or demonstrated interest rise to the top. Even above the supervisors, you already have plenty to say about what goes on. You need some people who understand from the bottom up. Hard to replace Sam.
Yeah, okay, we're trying to keep everybody with three minutes. I heard here, okay. How do you have something else?
Just, just one thing, and then you talk about being off base, this would be it. I, I'm a little bit embarrassed that we're here. I mean, come on, let's get together on this. We're all citizens of Laus County. Let's find some common ground and move forward. I, and, and I'm here. Because I believe Sam was a good conservation board member. I don't know whether he was. Treated appropriately. That's not for me to say. I just think, come on, let's move forward. We got, we got a lot of work to do in this county. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Brad, do you mind if I wrap up on Sam's? And I don't mean to cut anybody off.
No.
I'll take Randy's opportunity to bring us back to what I think this is supposed to be about. And I think a couple of things are really, really important that I stressed earlier, but that have really gotten into the context. And first, let me say that I think Sam and all of us here, certainly all of us here, ought to respect the comments of the public. These people go out of their way to express a comment in public forum. You gentlemen do it every day, or at least one day a week, and virtually every day. I'm not so naive to think people don't stop you on the street when you express that every day. So we understand when you're in a public forum, how easy it is for people to criticize, attack. And hopefully, once in a while, compliment you, or at least appreciate, and that may be the better word, to appreciate the job that people do on public boards and commission. And I think that's where we've gone astray here a little bit. There apparently have been some feelings by certain board members, whether it's the. Board of Supervisors or the Conservation Board about comments that Sam has made. It's not the reason that you dismissed him. It's not the reason you dismissed him. And I would take umbrage, let me use that word, offense a little bit, to some of the comments that your consultant made. Who at the outset said, I'm not an attorney. I think you've been given legal advice that. You have to look at the very reason, and you only gave one reason. One reason only for terminating Sam's appointment. And that is something he posted on, on social media. And he used the word corrupted. And we've talked about opinions that people have, but I want to read you. That, that your investigator used the word corrupt. That's wrong. That's not what Sam said. Sam did not accuse anybody of being corrupt. He used the word that the board may have been corrupted in the context of being influenced. That's a philosophical. Concept of what opinions and what influence certain people may have on the board or not have. You may agree, you may not agree, but let me read you the definition of corrupted. It says spoiled, tainted, vicious, depraved, debased. That comes out of Black's Law典 dictionary, which cites Webster's dictionary, which is what most of us use every day. Nick, Mr. Parsons and I will even tell you, we don't use words like that every day. We don't use the word malfeasance. You probably can't think two times in most of your lives you've ever used that word. But it has a very important legal significance. And Sam's comments talk more about being, what's that word I just said? Spoiled, retaineded. That's an opinion. That's clearly an opinion. Despite what somebody says, that this may rise to the level of defamation. Number one, it doesn't. Number two, defamation defamation is not illegal. It's not unlawful. It is a civil proceeding. And so I would ask with all due respect to bring this back where it should be. You folks have to make a finding that Sam's very simple comments constitute malfeasance. And whether you agree with those comments or not, or whether someone was offended by those comments. Because they may have taken them out of context, or didn't understand the whole context of how Sam wanted and intended them. That's unfortunate, but it doesn't rise to the level of malfeasance. And you have a legal obligation. Both to the county and the state. You have a legal obligation to make that finding to terminate him. And all these other comments are certainly, I think, well-respected. And I think, Randy, your comment is certainly appropriate, that. That discussion may be for another day, and that's an appropriate way as well. But hopefully, we can focus on what this hearing could have and should have been about. And again, we respectfully ask that the board simply rescind their previous termination of Sam's position. And I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
And we're responsible.
Well. I'm not going to, at this stage, respond to legal arguments, since this is not a legal body and they're not lawyers making a decision. I will say that if there are further appeals to the court. I would simply say that the board went through the analysis, but they came to the decision they did. And issued the order, and at the close of the public hearing, the board will have the opportunity to ratify that decision or. Make a different decision, and that goes up to the board.
And the decision was, how long was that to make that decision? How long was we in?
We were discussing legal ramifications and analysis in closed session for quite some time, a couple hours, I think. So it was not an easy decision. We had a lot to talk about, but. There was substantial discussion, so.
And as elected officials. When you read something that a board is corrupt, you're corrupted, well. Most people here are corrupt, not corrupted. It's our duty to the taxpayers to prove and disprove this. And that's the reason for this hearing today. Now we've got to weigh the facts, not personalities, and figure out how we will come out on this.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Oh, Saturday.
Okay, public hearing is not closed. Thank you.
Time frame on? You can make a decision today, or you can make a decision that's up to me. There's no. I don't believe there's any set time in the code. It should be as soon as possible, right, requirement that the hearing had to be held within three days, so.
Is it going to be voters? Is it going to be what? I have, I, I made the decision. I'm going to stick with the decision I made prior. So there's me. That's up to you two. I'm happy with the decision we made. We'll go forward with it.
I'd like to think about it.
It's not on our agenda.
Okay, we'll put it on the agenda.
You're not going to decide?
Well, he wants.
Well, yes, okay. If it's a tie, you break the tie.
Okay, so I hear a week, coming back a week.
Next week.
Okay, I'll be gone. It's my next two days.
You want to ask you the next one, somebody?
You too.
September starts.